So. I just have to show you what he got. See.
I call the order, the Westlake City Schools regular board meeting for August twenty second, twenty twenty two. Roll call.
Panukin.
Here.
Zinski.
Here.
Craft.
Here.
You're not.
Here.
Stole.
Here.
If you would join me, please stand to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather tonight and meet, we gather to forward our mission. That mission is to educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. And also to forward our vision, the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered, twenty-first century learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement and tangible results. It's great to see everyone here as well as online. Thank you for joining us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Stole.
Yes.
Panukin.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Zinski.
Yes.
You're not.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have a hearing of the public. The public may address the board during periods of debating designated for public participation. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. Several people wish to speak. Each person is allotted three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present in voting. Anyone wish to address the board at this time of agenda? Seeing none, we've all had an opportunity to review our minutes from the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty two meeting. All those in favor of approving those minutes say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the board item three A, the resolution to approve Westlake Quarter Public Library trustees?
So.
Second.
Discussion. I know that we have Director Mangles as well as trustee plants with us tonight. Do you care to address the board?
I'm here.
You bet.
My name is Andrew Mangles. I am a Westlake resident and director of Westlake Porter Public Library. First of all, I want to thank you for letting me be here this evening on the agenda. For those who may be listening or for posterity, I think it's always important to point out, Westlake Porter Public Library is a school district library, and that means two things, that the school district has oversight for the final appointing of our trustee board of trustees, and also is our taxing authority for purposes of putting something on the ballot. So for anybody who might be wondering why we're we're here for this issue. We're very, we have two things to mention in that regards. One, that you do not need to take action on. Jason Noldy, who has been a trustee for seven years, his term was would be ending at the end of this year. The the policies procedures that are in place allow a current trustee to simply state that they would like to be reappointed and they automatically are. But Jason did express another, he wanted to be for another term. So there's Jason. And then our other one was vacated when trustee Kate Maber, who left the board because she had moved out of the area. That was the reason that she was no longer on the board. So we ran a recruitment process and our board of trustees, Bob Plants and Will Perry interviewed all candidates who applied, and I believe we had eleven excellent people who apply. It's really, really difficult when, you know, people are willing to volunteer their time, their energy, all of those things, and all candidates are equally qualified to, you know, up to a point where you say, well, gosh, how do you even make a decision? So they had a really, really tough choice. The choice that they are recommending tonight to you is former superintendent Dan Keenan, where we've asked for you to approve his candidacy, and I would answer any questions or Bob Plants could also about the process or anything else you might have.
Thank you.
You never called me for reference.
So Andrew, is our amendment okay as written, having Jason on there or?
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion or questions?
It's great to see Dan. Getting involved in the library. He was very excited about it. When he called and asked if I'd be a reference, and he said he felt like giving back to the community. I said, this is, it's great. So he was very excited about it. Good hit.
Great.
That was a laugh.
Telling Dr. Gagen before the meeting started, it was remarkable, the people in this community that stepped forward, offered their services for something like that. Very challenging, very challenging. And we had three of them. We would have had three very fine candidates. So it was, it was tough, but Dan, Dan won out.
Excellent. Good. Any other questions, thoughts? Roll call.
Zinski.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Panukin.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
You're not.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I would love to stay for your meeting, but I actually have another meeting to get to, you know, if you all know the drill. Thank you very much.
You. This time we have informative reports and recognition superintendent Gavin. Great. Thank you for the time. Well, the time has come. It's time to open our doors to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year, which happens this Wednesday, the twenty fourth. Many of our staff members have been back since Thursday. Our teachers arrived and we have more and more classifications of staff members showing up every day. On Thursday, our teachers had time to get their rooms together, come in, start to put together their classrooms to get ready for the year and their spaces. On Friday, we had convocation, which for those of you don't know what convocation is, it's when we bring in the majority of the district employees and we set the stage for the year. Talk about the common goals that we have and our expectations as we enter this year. Was a really nice convocation. It was really nice to see people back in the Performing Arts Center. And then staff meetings happen. So then the buildings would, the people would go back to the building that they're assigned to, and the principals would hold staff meetings to get a little bit more detailed on building related topics. Tomorrow, our staff will make their final preparations for the start of a school year. They got their classrooms ready. We had district level meetings, and then they had grade level meetings. I'm sorry, today, I meant to mention, they had professional development. So they spent all day today working together on different topics. This year, obviously huge focus on school safety. We have that every year, but our school resource officers put together little workshop for each of the buildings. What was kind of neat about it is we have a, we have a resource officer in every building, and they didn't just present to their individual building. All four of them traveled together from building to building to building. And one of the things that we really wanted to make sure that we had was consistency and clarity. So you didn't have one SRO kind of saying this and another one SRO saying that, and and or one staff hearing it this way or hearing it that way. So we, we had a very consistent message today for that. That there's a new teacher evaluation process that is being rolled out this year. One of the agenda items that you're going to see on the agenda tonight is we did have some teachers come in, actually Amanda and Paul, I think, did the work and had some teachers come in so that they sat down together and understood what was coming in this. And so today it was not only administration presenting the new teacher evaluation process, but there were colleagues, teacher colleagues and sharing that information as well. So that, that was another topic. And then general wellness. We do have our two social workers and they put together presentation for our staff on how to take care of themselves as they come back and they, they get back into the swing of things. So really productive day today. Amanda, anything you want to chime in on with the, the day?
Well, it was nice. You know, when we first planned the safety, the resource officers actually contacted me to ask if they could do school safety. And of course, but then after speaking with Paul and speaking with Patrick Morrow, you know, the president, we wanted to make sure we balanced that because, you know, we walk back, you're excited, you had a great summer, and then all of a sudden let's talk about school safety. And then we don't want, we want me to start here that way. We don't want anyone coming in concerned, down, anything like that. So balancing that with kind of a self-care, here's kind of, you know, how to focus on you. And elementary teachers, when I was there this afternoon, they said it was so nice having a session that was focused on us and making sure that we were okay, because they, they, they got the kids. You know, our staff is fantastic. They're into caring for their kids. So that was just a nice thing on us today. It really helped us because we do care about our staff very, very much, and they take great care of our kids. So we need them to take care of themselves. So it was just a nice, nice thing to add.
Thinking about the presentation, a convocation, and thinking about that idea of safety and, you know, will it bring, bring staff down? And I, and I think about the response, say, from staff during that presentation, just they, the resource officers continue to reach out and staff back to them. It just seems like there's a great relationship today just continued that.
It did. It actually went very well. The way they presented it, you know, it's never a fun topic to talk about. But it was just, it was very conversational. Our, our, we are very fortunate to have our source, and I think everyone walked out feeling calm, because they know what to do, you know, in those unfortunate events. They know what to do, and they know that they are backed by our police department, which is, you know, part of it.
Thank you.
What I thought, one of the, the best messages from that presentation from Lieutenant
Danny.
Danny was how he emphasized the training. I mean, they always fall back on the training and.
I was just about to read that quote.
Oh.
Here, go for it. Yeah. So I just, my presentation, and one of the things, and it is, and I agree a hundred percent, and that actually, it gives me a moment to recognize Chief Belozer, who I, I will continue to say it in meetings and when I, I speak publicly and privately as well, is he's one of the most innovative police chiefs in this area. And, and the things that we're doing today, we've been doing for five years. This is not something that just started happening. And he does send me a lot of articles or breakdowns of different incidents so that they can learn from it and we can learn from it. And one of them had this quote that I really liked, and it says, heroes are made because they prepare for an incident. People never rise to the occasion. They fall back on their training. And I really like that because it is something where we don't want, we don't want our, the safety of our, our staff and our students to be happen chance or reliant on a person doing something special, because that's not always going to happen. You know, we, we want to be a school district that takes the time to prepare and, and drill things over and over again so that, you know, God forbid, something like that did happen. We, we, we weren't guessing on what to do. And so that was, that was really nice. And Lieutenant Dancey, who we've referenced, he is an incredible resource. The knowledge that he has, and I think his military background with the way he structures and drills, and, and I remember another thing being said is, you know, I think something along the lines of you, you have to drill so you never miss. You know, you, you drill as if to a point where you can't miss. And, and I think that's kind of what we're looking at. So we greatly appreciate that partnership. Switching back to my report on Wednesday, Channel nineteen, they contacted us and they're doing these nice little shorts on schools coming back, first day of school. And they're going to spend the morning with us, start off on our Dover campus as our kids come back on, you know, seeing our teachers and our kids. And then we're going to go over to the elementary campus. Well, I, I really liked this because I, I got to say, we are super excited to open the school year and, and to be able to share that out and put that out to our community. I think is a really nice thing. Registration, I want to touch on. Registration has been really busy. I, I don't know if it was the fact that a lot of registrations came at this. I don't know if it was timing, where a bunch came in at the same time, or if it was changing in our process, because we do have a new registrar and the process that she was following was more of a stricter COVID-related, where parents would have to scan a lot of the documents and a lot of things were happening electronically. The way we used to do it was to sit in park side at tables and, and families would come in and sit down individually with people. Found that to be not only a lot more efficient, because if you're missing a document, I can go through and say, oh, you're missing this particular document. It doesn't become an email exchange. And, and the other thing is it's personable. You know, where you're actually able to sit down and talk to somebody. So it has been busy, primarily caught up. We, we are, and, and when it comes to our enrollment, we're going to be close to the same. And I, we're not going to see a, a large spike and we're not going to see a drop. I think it's, it's going to, we might be up a little.
We were just about, and then we grabbed twelve enrollments today.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's when Evelyn kind of looks at it and she's like, hey, I'm just about caught up. There you go. Twelve more in.
Well, the twelve that just arrived be able to start on Wednesday?
It depends if they submitted all their documents.
Okay.
You know, so that, that tends to, you also have thirteen families that were waiting to finish their registration, even though they're missing something.
I think the digital, I think doing it electronically has been a huge hindrance because you'll have families who number one, they might not have a scanner. And whether you're taking pictures of something and sending it and renaming it, it becomes confusing for everyone. So that is something we're going to reevaluate and we want to get back into probably more an in-person type of structure. Right? I want to touch on softball, baseball fields. We did meet again with O Sports on Friday. We received more information about their designs. O Sports is now putting together projected costs for what we discussed on Friday. We don't want to come out and put things on the screen and say, look, doesn't this look awesome? And then realize that it costs too much and then we can't, you know, it isn't a true option. So while they have nice thoughts, you know, we really need to see what they would be estimating, and they're connecting with some companies. And what's the target we set for them coming back?
With the pricing stuff right after Labor Day.
Right after Labor Day. So we will have that information. We, we have been in, we've maintained the conversations with the city and the recreation departments, and we're trying to find a date in September that would work to have a meeting. Obviously, I'd like to present to the board as well to make sure that, that, you know, you guys have that information as well. We're not presenting to the city something that you haven't seen. Oh, I do want to take it in, in this, I'll just jump in. I'm, I'm not going to skip over you, Todd, but I did write down some agenda items that I'll just touch on. You know, in my area of five B, this was a situation where that particular teacher was hired through the ESC last year. At the time, we were working through her full certification. Now she has it and we're transitioning her into Westlake. It's for gifted coordination, gifted intervention specialist. Five G, that's a little different. If you notice that the, the supplemental contracts in a previous recommendation is a flat rate where it says, you know, but this, but you'll notice in five G, these are hourly rates and they're different hourly rates. And we, it's, it's one of those things that we've struggled with in the past, but we are, we've been able to come up with the process and formula to be able to hire classified staff to do supplemental positions. That's been something that we, we haven't been able to do because it's different when you have a salaried employee. You're not dealing with the overtime that you would for an hourly employee. So we did have to do work and Todd was great in trying, helping us figure that out. And, and it's something that it gets even more prominent when you're dealing with more and more staffing issues. You know, when you are having a hard time finding coaches or finding people to do extra things, and then you're a school district where we can't employ more than half of our staff, our classified staff to any of these positions because of the overtime guidelines. No, it's not. No, it's not our, our contract. It's, it's more
the Fair Labor Standards Act, so hourly employees have to be tracked hourly, hourly. And then by federal law, anything over forty hours in a week has to be paid at overtime blended rate in between the multiple jobs. It's federal law is what is the biggest option.
So it's not our thing, and we just had to figure out a way to do that. So that's why you're going to notice that being a little bit different. Five H is the O test two point O team that I referenced earlier, who worked with Amanda and Paul and Bob over the summer. That's for them to get paid there. Five O is link personnel, personnel. It's a couple of positions in link where there were some adjustments made in there, and this scale is similar to the adjustments made to the hours employees, hourly employees in link. Five S is for an exchange student. If you notice in there, we don't approve the individual student. We approve the organization. So that's what's happening there. And then five U through five Y, those are going to be adjustments and corrections to either previous board resolutions, either due to step changes, supplemental adjustments, funding sources, or licensure. So that is my report. And then when we get to my section, if you want to ask any questions, please feel free to do that. On O Sports is still doing maintenance work in the fall, correct? No, we're actually. Yeah. So we did kind of contact Mommy Bay to make sure, because you hear a lot where you need X amount of this and X amount of that, and there may be some disagreement to where, you know, our maintenance staff may be saying we need this amount, and then, you know, some of the people may think we need a different amount. So we're just bringing in an organization to come in and say, we want to put this to bed and we want it to be a great field next year. What are your recommendations and when can you do it? So that's what we do. Our next informative reports from our treasurer, Mr. Hopkins.
Just have to say I feel hurt that he skipped over me like that. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I just want to say good luck, and I'm excited for all of our students as they start this week. It's great to have the teachers and staff back as we get fully prepared. You know, it is funny as the treasurer's office runs a little bit opposite of what our school year calendars do. So, you know, August, I know our academic staff, our central office staff in general, from the tech department, business office, academic staff, people services, they're all ramped up, you know, on, on, you know, on high caffeine and rolling along very fast. You know, August is a little bit slower for us in the, in the treasurer's office. You know, September ramps up a little bit more for us as we will be presenting to Finance Committee first, and then the Board of Education for our annual budget. We are required by the end of September to have permanent appropriations, which is our, our annual budget approved by the Board of Education for the entire year. So our administrators have been fantastic in working through budgets. I'm currently gathering all of that information together and putting that together for a proposal to Finance Committee. And then ultimately, my hope is to bring it to the board at one of the two meetings in September. We'll see how timing works out. But initially, I was planning for the second one. Beyond that, you know, I'll just go on my recommendations unless you have questions for me.
I, I think about the finance meeting. Do you have a estimate when we might have that meeting? Do you think? You think it would be beginning of September, later part of?
You know, I need another week or two to get my budgets.
Good.
So I would be.
I prefer later September.
And that, that would be fine.
Okay, good.
Absolutely.
That'd be closer to your deadline as well.
Yep.
Yeah. You're good with that? And we'd probably include some O Sports in that meeting as well.
We can. We'll have much more information at that time.
Thanks.
And can just have that for you guys. Moving into the recommendations, I have just a few here tonight. We have temporary appropriations. As we just spoke about permanent appropriations, up until permanent appropriations are approved, we operate what's known as temporary appropriations. So this is just really moving money around more so as, if, if you recall, at the end of June, the board approved temporary appropriations for this year at a percentage of what we spent last year. Well, that works great until you run into doing POs or checks for, an example would be a organizational dues that are all due at one time. So my, the administrators are fantastic about moving money around, but when we move money, it gets approved by Dr. Gagen, but also ultimately needs to come to the board. So that is the temporary appropriations there. B I have is requesting that we raise our certified substitute teacher pay. As we looked at other districts around us, we want to be competitive with other districts in order to encourage subs to come to Westlake Schools and work for us. This is for our day-to-day subs. We do need a lot of substitute teachers, and we have three hundred plus teachers in the district. We all have days when there's, you know, maybe a child sick, they're ill, appointments, things of that nature that people are out for. And so we need to bring those subs in. So currently last year, or up until we approved this, we currently have a rate of one hundred dollars per day for a standard sub. It was a hundred and five if you work ten days in a row, and then a hundred and ten for retirees. After consulting with Dr. Gagen and Mr. Maber, we are recommending raising it to a flat one hundred and twenty dollars a day. That should make us very comparable to other districts in this general area. C is allowing me to transfer funds. This is a ten thousand dollar transfer to cover our pool lease. This is the last year on the pool lease, so it's something that we'll need to discuss with the city. As we've talked about in the past, the pool lease is a lease for the use of the pool facility for practices and swim meets. So it's something that we'll discuss with the city moving forward, but this is the last payment. D has some then annulled certificates. And then E is a couple of purpose statements and budgets that came in late after we approved our bulk of them last month. If there are no objections, I'm happy to combine A through E into one resolution.
Is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations five A through B?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So what about with the pool? I mean, we've paid for twenty-five years, right?
We have.
So it's been two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That is correct.
Okay. So do you anticipate that going forward that will be charged?
You know, again, this is going to be a conversation that we're going to need to have with the city directly. If you look at the pool lease itself, the lease gives what you're according to the lease, what the board is paying for is the board is paying for exclusive time at the pool, including, I think it's two or two and a half hours a day of practice time from like November to February includes, I want to say eleven meets, I could be off on that, but it includes eleven meets for a maximum four hours per meet. It has different pieces like that. So I would not be surprised if the city is looking to extend that lease, and that's something that we would have to have as consideration and discussions, Bob.
Can we add that to our agenda for finance?
Of course. Thanks.
Oh, one more question. About the substitute pay, and, and when reading the chart of all the other, I think a hundred and twenty will put us competitively. What did you think at all about like going just a little bit more?
You know, we've talked about it. You know, financially, you're looking at a twenty percent increase or near twenty percent increase because there were some of those other factors in there, but the vast majority of our subs were at a hundred dollar a day. So you're looking at that twenty percent. That equates to about seventy-five thousand dollar a year increase to the district costs involved. And so we discussed it a little bit, but you know, we do think that Westlake is appealing for people to come to as compared to some of other districts around. And so we, we were looking to just be competitive with them and not necessarily looking to exceed them.
Okay.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Panukin.
Yes.
You're not.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Zinski.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Dr. Gagen, we're going to move on to superintendent's recommendation. Yes, I will just cover six A, where this is our resolution to accept gifts and donations. The first is the William Corley Foundation of the Westlake Bay Village Rotary Club donated a thousand dollars to the Best Buddies Club at Westlake High School. And Mary Ann Lowe's from Travel Centers of America donated school supplies to grades K through eight and project link. So that would be, and then the rest I've already gone through. If there's other ones that you would like me to talk more about, but what I could do is, and I think I may have been referring to those as five instead of six when I was talking about it, but I had the heading wrong. So, so six A would be one that I think we should keep separate. However, if the board is okay with it, we could combine letters B through Y. Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation six A?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you as always.
I'll mention. I'll mention, um, uh, of course, best buddies. We talk about best buddies, uh, a little bit. Um. It began as circle of friends, uh, evolved into best buddies. We had, uh, Mrs. Divine. And also one of her students presents, uh, to, um, the, uh, Westlake Bay Village Rotary Club. And talked a little bit more about, uh, all the good things that go on the best buddies and Westlake City Schools, which is great. Further discussion?
That's a very nice donation from Rotary Club.
Thank you all. We're good group.
Most of the time.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Stole?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations six B? Through six Y?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
It's good to see field trips back on the.
Yeah.
I was gonna say it's good seeing the, uh, the hop trip back in the fall.
Yeah. Sense of normalcy is returning.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Lizinski?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have a second hearing of the public. Public may address the board during periods of meeting designated for public participation. Each person addressing board shall give his or her name and address. Several people wish to speak. Each person has a lot of three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all those who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority in the board present in voting. Would anyone like to address the board at this time? Seeing that, we're going to move on to board comments.
I have to say, oh, I, uh, been walking through Westlake High School in particular, a fair amount with my daughter starting there and this buildings look really good. Um, and even just driving around Dover campus with the new signage. Um, in parking lots being all, uh, touched up. The buildings look really, really good and the football field looked great at the home football game on Friday night. Even though they lost, um, it was still a good.
They're playing better.
They are. Playing a lot better. Um, so it'll be a fun football season.
Had a band sound?
The band sounds great as always.
All right.
So it was fun evening. Um, I had a parent, uh, ask me on Friday, actually, um. One of our neighboring suburbs, uh, school districts has had one of their parking lots, some practice cones for driving maneuverability. And it's in a, I believe it's more like their central office where for like practicing parking and whatnot. And that would be something that we potentially put out. Where. Not during this good day or, you know, during the school day, but for on the weekends when. Parents are trying to get students.
Same cars back here with the cones doing.
They bring their own cones generally, but they're, uh, one of our neighboring schools actually has two sets of cones.
Yeah, there's an Avon Elementary School that does that over up of, uh. J CACs, I believe it is.
If that would be something we might want to consider.
Possible, yeah. Dave's like, okay.
Yeah.
But the link kids make cones now.
Especially, you know, we've got some buildings in, in the evenings and weekends. The parking lots are, it's used.
Other board. Uh, yeah, uh, uh, update on Holly Lane, oh.
So, um, Holly Lane has had a security fence put around it, uh, in the recent week, now we're gonna have. Um, we met with contractors at a pre-bid meeting this week. They included demolition contractors and the baiting contractors. Um, so the, uh, group plus four, uh, bids have been put out. And they are due at the end of the month. Once they have them in, I, in construction, will meet with Mr. Hopkins and myself to review those prices. And then a recommendation for the, uh, uh, the winning bidders or the bids will be presented. We still are on timelines to have abatement, uh, completed in the month of September, early October. Followed by demolition, hopefully by the middle of November.
Okay. Second question is how much havoc is having Dover Center traffic? Closed presenting to our buses, transportation.
Mr. House has been in contact with, uh, the city on a, um. Almost daily basis, they update him with any, um, changes, reclosures or hate words. And they make adjustments of, well. Hasn't been too bad yet, but then again, for.
Right, right. Well, I was glad the other part was finished in time, but then.
Right.
Uh, when is that due to be? Do you have any idea when it's projected to be finished?
Um, yes, uh. They were hopeful that it would be done by the start of school. Um, but I think that's all over dependent. So I would imagine it would be finishing up sometime.
Couple, couple more weeks.
Uh, along the same lines, I'm thinking about, uh, traffic lights, um, I tell you, it, it seems like the city has adjusted traffic lights. Uh, in the last week or so. I was thinking you say over the summer, we had the Dover campus light stopping red. Uh, that may at one point have had something to do with, uh, the construction that was going on in and around there.
I think that might have been coincidental with that, although I did see the city's, um, contractor about add some of our reception. That can be, uh, um, the entry to our campuses. Um, and I suspect that they may have been doing some adjustments to.
Awesome. Thank you. Further comments, with the board comments?
As always, you know, I wish everyone a good first day of school and remind parents to be patient, uh, with the buses on the first day of school and.
That's a great point. I really is, it, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but boy, that's one where. People like to take pictures like before they're taking it on the bus. And if you figure that, that if it takes thirty seconds, right, for, for you to stop and pose and smile and that happens at every stop. Um, it adds up, right? And so, yes, please be patient. Um. We, we do have drivers do dry runs of their routes, but, um, I thank you for bringing that up. That's a very good point.
Great point. Convocation was, uh, awesome. Uh, just, um. Uh, a, a lot of energy, uh, very well done. Um, you continue to foster, uh, a great community. Uh, here in Westlake. So thank you for that. Uh, thanks to all staff. Thanks to all the directors for, uh, your reports that helps us tremendously. And, uh, I know kids are excited, families are excited, staff is excited. We are very excited. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Is, uh, any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move, second.
Discussion?
Roll call? To adjourn at six thirty-eight PM, Fanukin?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yeah, adjourned. Thank you.